Agenda for combined meeting, 5:00 PM, November 1st, 2023. Roll call please.
Ms. Acosta?
Here.
Ms. Douglas?
Here.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
Mr. Rivera?
Here.
Mrs. Sabrana?
Present.
Mr. Silva?
Here.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Here.
Ms. Spinelli?
Here. In compliance with the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law, commonly referred to as the Sunshine Law, the Violin Board of Education has caused notice and posting of this meeting to be sent to the following: Announcing time, place, agenda, et cetera. The Daily Journal, S&amp;J Today, The Press of Atlantic City, Vesta Bueno, The Clerk of the City of Vineland, and the Administrative Public Bulletin Board. At this time, we will stand for the flag salute. Could we have VHS, JROTC, the Sergeant Dominic Pillip Middle School, and the Veterans Memorial Middle School?
Let's have a round of applause for our flag saluters. Don't go anywhere. We have some certificates from our board members that are going to come down and we'll get a picture with everyone.
And to our junior ROTC, good luck on Friday with your inspection.
Two actual, I think we're missing a couple. Are we missing anyone? Yeah. Okay. So again, you want to take them? Okay. Everyone else, right? So just the one that I can get.
Thank you again. Let's have a round of applause for our flag saluters. Scott, do we have a resolution for executive session?
We do. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the City of Vineland School District will convene an executive session for the following reasons as outlined in NJSA 10:4-12. Discussion is about any pending litigation, any employment matter, and any matters falling within the attorney-client privilege to the extent that confidentiality is required in order for the attorney to exercise his ethical duties as a lawyer.
We're going to do our special presentations first. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Roll call please.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Ms. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So at this time, we're going to go into our special presentations and then we'll do our executive session after.
Our first special presentation will be in honor of Veterans Day. So we want to recognize our school employees who are also veterans. It is essential to salute their selfless service to our nation and the admirable dedication that they bring to our educational community. We are grateful for their sacrifice and leadership and we are proud to have them as an integral part of our school community. I'm going to read out a few names. If you're here, please come on up to the front. We have a certificate for you. We're going to take a nice picture. First, we'd like to recognize Mr. DeSanto, our board solicitor, Reserve Air National Guard, 20 years. Mr. Joseph Camardo, Principal at Barcy School, Air National Guard, 20 years. We also have a teacher at Tanner Building, Jeffrey Perez, World Language, US Army, 10 years. I'm not sure if he's here. I want to announce we also have a teacher at Petway, Florence Spavak, Nurse, US Army, 21 years. Come on down. Wallace School, Marquis Strickland. He's a teacher at Army and has been with us for nine years. Marquis Strickland, he's not here though. And our last special recognition goes to Karina Calixto from Wallace Social Worker Army Reserve. We're going to take a quick picture. Oh, did we have somebody just come in for the recognition? Not sure. I don't believe so. Okay, we're going to take a quick picture, right? Don't want to miss anybody. For our second special presentation, I want to invite Mr. Adams, VHS Tanner Building Principal. Please come on up.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Mr. Adams, Tanner Building Principal on the VHS campus. I would just like to thank Mr. Yano, our central administrative team and the rest of the Board of Education for allowing me to speak briefly tonight on behalf of some great things happening at Violin High School. And they are all due to Ms. Heather Fiori, one of our wonderful library and media specialists. This summer, Ms. Fiori attended the 2023 ITSE Conference in Philadelphia. ITSE is another educational acronym and it stands for the International Society of Technology in Education. And it is just that it is an international society of professionals that brings educators from all over the world together to discuss and use technology in revolutionary ways. Tonight, we have Ms. Heather Schrader, the Senior Business Development Manager of ClickView. And she is going to present Ms. Fiori with a $5,000 check for Ms. Fiori's efforts in attending the ITSE Summer Conference. So Ms. Schrader, I appreciate your generosity. And Ms. Fiori, I appreciate you going above and beyond in the summertime to supply all of the technological advances that are in the industry of education and that are developing in education. And Ms. Fiori does some amazing and phenomenal things with our students in the Media Center as well as Ms. Reynolds in the South Media Center. So I just want to say thank you to both Ms. Schrader, to Mr. Yano, to our board, and to Ms. Fiori for this opportunity that has been made available to us. So Ms. Schrader and Ms. Fiori, if you would like to come up.
Thank you, team. That's awesome. What an awesome recognition. And $5,000 to VHS Tanner Building, our media specialists. Wonderful, wonderful news. At this time, Ms. Dina Rodolfo, she's going to bring the excitement to this meeting. We're going to be talking all year long. We'll be waiting for the 2022-2023 Assessment Results Presentation.
Hello, everybody. As everybody knows, I'm Dina Rodolfo, Supervisor for School Counseling here in the district. I also oversee state assessments. So every year, we are required to publicly report our state assessment results. I am not going to go over every slide. It is posted. It'll be posted on our website. You all have a link to it or you should have a link to it on the agenda. I'm just going to go over generally what you're looking at so that when you have time to look at it, you'll be able to identify the trends and what we're seeing. I did highlight some things on there so that you will be able to identify the areas that I was able to pick up on. So when you're looking at, this is a state template, so we're following the state template. So what you're looking at is you're looking at the comparison between 2022 and 2023 in levels one through five. Level one, not meeting. Two, partially. Three, approaching. Four, met. And five, exceeding. So what you really want to look at is those last two columns. And you know, everybody thinks, well, it's a negative. How could it be green and a positive? It's because what we're looking for is we're looking for the numbers to decrease at one and two and increase up at four and five. So that's why when it's a negative at the one and two, it's going to be in green because that's what we want. And when it's, you know, a positive at four and five, that's also what we want. So I just wanted to highlight those things so that you can see the trends and where we're going. And that's when you're looking at all these slides, that's kind of what you're looking at. And this was our language arts. And this here is again our math and it's the comparison of levels of 2022 and 2023. There's a better slide on this one. So this one is essentially the overall. So what you're looking at is the changes in levels one and two in comparison to the state for between 2022 and 2023. Again, one and two, you're going to want to see those negative numbers. That means we're decreasing there. That means less students at the bottom and more students. And we have the green at the top. We have more students up at those upper two levels. So that's what you're looking at. And you can see the ones highlighted in gray. Those are the ones where we are actually exceeding what the state had, the state levels. And this is for mathematics, the same slide only for mathematics. And that's science. These are the number of students that we tested between 2022 and 2023 and the difference of pupils that tested. And this is our mathematics. And the one thing you have to look at because everybody looks at this, the mathematics numbers. And when you look at the mathematics slides, you'll see it. Our geometry, we only have to test Algebra I for our ninth grade students. We do test geometry and Algebra II. That's if they're in it. So those are our advanced students who have taken it at AMSA. So when you see the scores, it's just our accelerated students who are taking that geometry and Algebra II. So we don't have as many students taking it. And this is our science number of students tested. So this here is our comparison of levels one and two. Again, I'm not going to go over all these slides because we'll be here till tomorrow morning because there's a lot that the state asks for when we have to submit this. And this is level five. And again, this is what I just mentioned to keep in mind, our grade eight data. They participated. Not all of our students participated in grade eight math because they were in Algebra I. So those scores are kind of just reflective of your regular students who took general math, whereas we had a lot of students taking Algebra I in eighth grade. These are again percentages, level one and two. These are levels three and four. They make us break it down quite a bit. And these are our level fives, which we aren't quite there yet, but the trend from what you saw on the previous slides, we are moving in the right direction. So this is what I kind of wanted to show. This is what we have to do is identify each school and their scores. I didn't want to put schools on here, so I have them alphabetized, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H. I didn't want to put schools' names on here. So administration here knows who they are and has the scores. So what you can see over here, it's the comparison and I highlighted them in obviously yellow, the increase from 22 to 23. So we have schools, the majority of our elementary schools making progress in levels four and five. And this is grade four for language arts. Same thing, making progress. You know, and some of them are like, School D went from 3% in 22 to 20.4%. That's a huge jump. So we have a couple of schools had some huge jumps like that. And this is grade three mathematics. Again, most of our schools in mathematics did improve from 22 to 23. Some were small jumps, but some were bigger jumps. As you can see from the scores, we had a 17% to a 31.7%. So that's a pretty big jump. And this is our grade four percentages. Again, I highlighted that. I'm not going to, I don't want to go through all of this. Taking up all your time. And then when we got, the other thing the state requests us to do is to compare schools to the state and to the districts. So that's what these other slides are. So when you look at that and that's what those are, the school comparisons, elementary and middle to the state on all the different levels. These are intervention strategies that Mrs. DiMarci put in there. So parent outreach and communication. Our assessment results, they're shared with parents. Our data is put straight on the portal. Parents have access to it. They're notified of it. Counseling department obviously is supporting students and communicating with families. We small group targeted instruction to meet individual student needs. Our ASP plans, you know, they're developed per school with ELA math goals in each. Daily walkthroughs, INRS, CST, curriculum evals and revisions, and some additional PLC time for staff. This is a comparison. We have to also put in there subgroups comparison from 22 to 23. So these are the students who tested and the percentages. And last but not least, our graduation rate. I always include that so that you guys can see it. So 2022, we had quite a bit of a dip and that was a result of COVID. We had a lot of students who were on virtual from 20 to 21 through 21. So we dipped in 22 quite a bit, but we are back up. And that's an estimate. I had to do a bunch of appeals, so they haven't put the final one out, but the appeals were approved. And we were at around 83.7 flat out. And with the appeals, with my math, we should be around 84.5. And I believe that is it. That's it. Any questions? If you do, you can email me. It's going to be on the portal and not on the portal, on the website and you'll be able to have access to it.
At this time, we are going to enter into our executive session and we will be back shortly.
All right. Thank you for being patient with us. Moving on, HIB report. Any questions or comments regarding the HIB? Seeing none. Approval of October fourth, two thousand twenty-three combined meeting minutes. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. Do I have a motion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Ms. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Ms. Cottis Body?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Approval?
Moving along to committee reports. Do I have any committee reports this evening? Starting with Mr. Fiocchi.
Good evening. Finance committee met Monday, October thirtieth at eight AM via Google Meet. In attendance was Mr. Mustarel, Mr. Rivera, Mr. Silva, Ms. Spinelli, Ms. Carey, and myself. Following topics were discussed: Grants and AIDS, NJ SIG grant, total available is eighty-three thousand dollars. NJ DOT grant, it's going to be used for sidewalks on Main from Landis to Chestnut. Following bids, RFPs, bus purchase financing, winning bid was four point two zero seven percent. Student support services, CCTV Phase Two camera project. Newfield Bank adjusted interest rate as of November first, twenty-three. PK aid for twenty-four, twenty-five. Food service negative balance for student accounts. CDL shared service agreement with downtownship. Thank you.
Mr. Holmes?
Good evening. The Transportation Committee met on Tuesday, October thirty-first via Google Meet. Present were Mr. Mustarel, Mr. Yano, Ms. Douglas, Mr. Rivera, Ms. Spinelli, Mr. Hall, Ms. Blakely, Ms. O'Brien, and myself. Driver recap, one hundred and drive, one hundred fifty drivers, budgeted one hundred and forty route packages, one hundred thirty-five field positions, eight subs, and seven drivers are in training. Average absences in the morning is seventeen point sixty-four. Average absences in the afternoon is nineteen point forty-four. There are twelve registrations in queue, mostly due to no documentation. There have been three accidents in October. There were no injuries. Buses, we have completed the RFP, and the winning bid was just over four point two percent for the financing. Once the board approved, we can start ordering buses. Route comparisons, Mr. Hall received some quotes for special education routes, the price range from three hundred sixty-nine to four, six hundred ninety-four per day. This is sixty-six thousand four hundred twenty to one hundred and twenty-four thousand nine hundred twenty per annuum. This does not include the possible need and cost for the nurse on the bus. This comparison is in response to questions from last month regarding why we add routes instead of subcontracting routes out. While this does add to delays, it saves the district considerable expense. We also discussed the CDL shared service agreement with downtownship. Thank you.
Any other committee reports this evening? Inez.
I'm gonna read through the minutes for curriculum instruction. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend the meeting, however, we do have the minutes. In attendance was Mrs. DiMarci, Ms. Megan Spinelli, Mr. Sabrana, and Mr. Silva. Discussed was the upcoming district in service on November seventh, and the restorative practice professional development. Also discussed was the upcoming submission of the dual enrollment grant, it's on the agenda tonight. Discussed were board approvals for curriculum, professional development, and college affiliation dual credit, and those are on the agenda tonight. Curriculum updates were discussed. In addition, there was discussion regarding New Jersey's adoption of new ELA and math standards. Curriculum revisions will take place, I believe that those standards come into effect for two thousand twenty-four. And finally, discussed was the PLC update for K through five.
Thank you. Public meeting report by our board solicitor.
Nothing for public session.
Do we have our senior class vice president, Ms. Gabriella Kumba? Would you like to come to the podium and say a few words?
Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone is well. Today, I am here to speak on behalf of the graduating class, and hopefully, we can make you guys, we can become the most memorable one yet. My name is Gabriella Kumba, and I have the privilege of being the class of two thousand twenty-four's vice president. Some other people I'd like to introduce include our president, which is in the audience, Denise Gonzalez, and our secretary, Thalia Duncan, she's also in the audience. I'd also like to introduce our treasurer, Casey Russellman, and our historian, Nishali Perez Torres, who could not be here tonight. We wanted to introduce ourselves and what we do at Vineland High School. We're notorious for our takeover of the previous class of two thousand twenty-three's fundraisers of We've Got You Wednesdays, where every Wednesday, we do a fundraiser that includes small businesses and big businesses in order to do a fundraiser. We also sell Chick-fil-A sandwiches and donuts frequently, whatever it may be, We've Got You Wednesday. We both aim to support small businesses and fundraise. As for all of us officers, we are all women, and we aspire to be role models for the little girls who are interested in holding positions of leadership. We are proud to mention that in the past, we succeeded in hosting a menstrual product drive and donated over three hundred products to our local women's shelter in honor of Women's History Month. Though we celebrate our successes, it's also important to revise and take into consideration the criticism and the backlash that both we as a school and as a district receive. Although we may be new faces to some, we are not new to this district, and we know what it means to feel like when we are being heard, excuse me. Despite the numerous conversations that we have had about disciplinary issues, which we have many ideas on how to potentially work on, we choose to focus on a different topic. We choose to focus on the issue of why so many students are no longer engaged with the school, why there are so many students disassociating and choosing to plug themselves into their virtual worlds. We are stifling creativity, even though we encourage teachers to bring to the table engaging and immersive lessons. As a result, students are caring less and less about school. After all, who wants to learn about anything when it's simply notes and busywork worksheets? I know I lose track of time when I learn about something engaging. Among us, the senior class, we've come up with an event that could potentially immerse students into getting involved with the school and channeling their inner creativity, as well as bringing the student body together. We propose a senior parking spot event where we can all paint our parking spots. I know I emailed Ms. Kimberly Rivera about a plan, and she can definitely forward that to you guys for more information about that. We thoroughly believe that creativity is the solution, and we strongly encourage all of you guys to please review our suggestion. While it's only a baby step in the right direction, little by little, we hope to accomplish and unify, as well as receive an insane amount of engagement. That's all we want. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Public comment on agenda items. Please limit yourself to three minutes, we have a timer up here, and we have two yellow sheets, and it is on any other comment, and you can come to the podium.
Thalia Duncan? Speaking on school curriculum.
Hello. Good afternoon. My name is Thalia Duncan, I'm speaking on the behalf of students within the district, and I'm gonna be talking about the curriculum. Before I start, please do not confuse my passion for me being disrespectful or being ignorant. We as students have had a lot of easy way out, for example, our education. Our educational standards were capped off at a fifty-nine four D. We get a forty percent for even showing up to class and don't have to do any work. Teachers aren't engaging, they are not interested in the curriculum they have to teach, and they just give us the work. For example, we can walk into a classroom and a teacher can say, read chapters one, two, and three, and write down the definitions, or even watch a video and take notes. Nothing is hands-on, and that's what makes us lose interest, and our attention span is so short. The assignments and the teaching style needs to be expanded, teachers are so limited of what they're allowed to do in a classroom. A lot of teachers that care about their jobs are the same teachers who are ended up quitting, and that is a problem because they are the ones who impact us as students the most. The education system has filled our youth, especially our minorities, when our whole Vineland High School is filled with minorities. When has it been okay for numbers and logical thinking, overpowered emotional reasoning and intelligence, as one of the most diverse schools full of minorities, inequalities, and injustice are twirling in our faces as if we're still living in nineteen hundreds? Is it a disgrace of how lowly we are thought of, and how blatantly obvious that we cannot face any challenges as a school? I'm not calling anybody out, but we as students, we would like a challenge in our academic careers. Thank you.
Chris Wilson?
Good evening, everyone. I just wanna commend the board, our HR department, on seeing things different. I would like to commend everyone up here, including our superintendent, all of our board members, and even the applicants that applied for the vice principal positions at Vineland High. I'm not here to pontificate as if my opinions always matter, or if you guys' opinions always matter, because they don't. But what we show and what we see now is that a collective effort and a collective thinking on hiring positions in an equitable, fair, and proper manner, I have nothing but ecstatic feelings about, all right? So I want to say thank you on the hiring of the vice principals in the eleven-twelve building, and also the nine-ten building. It brings me back to a time when Kermit Brunner was the vice principal at the nine-ten, and Mr. Harvard was the vice principal at the eleven-twelve. And just for me, speaking as an African-American male student at that time, I always felt that there was no building that I could act up in. So if, you know, Kermit Brunner knew my grandfather, he'll pull me in, you know, Mr. Harvard knew my mother, he'll pull me in. So just having that balance, having that balance was critical in my development of being a student in Vineland High School. And I would like to congratulate everyone that is thinking about all the students' development in our high schools, and what they need to see to want to do better, strive better, and to be better. And I think this board, I think this HR department, I'm not gonna say no names today, I think everyone made a huge step in showing that to the students of VHS. We have to have the courage to do what's right, even if it's not the popular choice. And I concur in the decisions that was made and the recommendations that were made. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else that would like to come to the podium this evening? Seeing none. Motions and resolutions, superintendent recommendations for discussion and approval by the board, consent agenda.
Requesting discussion on personnel items one point one through one point three. One point one, approval of the following, as noted on our agenda for retirements, resignations, student substitutes, extracurricular activities, and volunteers. One point two, approval of an hourly rate of twenty-one dollars per hour. One point two, approval of an hourly rate of twenty-one dollars per hour for school bus driver trainers. One point three, approval for compensation for long-term substitute teachers at two hundred per day when those substitute teachers serve beyond forty consecutive school days in the same coverage assignment.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none. Do I have motion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Ms. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Fioki?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Potty?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, Vice Principal, Mr. Hall. Would you like to come to the podium and say a few words? Would you like to come to the podium?
Good evening. I'm going to try not to make this an Oscar speech. Alright. I want to thank the committee and central administration for the recommendation to serve the students, parents, and teachers at Vineland High School in the role of assistant principal. I would also like to give a special thanks to the community leaders present, who have supported me through my professional journey and has also played a major part in highlighting the importance of minority representation within the school district. The portrait of a graduate puts an emphasis on ensuring that the school environment develops a level of empathy, adaptability, perseverance, responsibility, communication, and critical thinking. As a building administrator that has a background as a health professional and a high level of familiarity and relatability with our student and parent population, my intent is not only to lead in a manner that aligns with the culture that central administration has implemented, but to also have an energy, inclusive style, and love for this district that will stimulate our students academically, socially, and emotionally. Being a social worker for the child study team has enhanced my ability to better understand the importance of differentiated instruction, a holistic understanding of our students in every facet of their scholastic journey, and the importance of creating an engaging learning environment that is conducive to developing every student's individual ability. Thank you, and it's time to work.
Thank you and congratulations. At this time, I have a personal matter and I'm going to hand it off to my vice, uh, vice president, Ms. Cottis Potty.
Requesting discussion on procedures and operations items two point one through two point fourteen. Two point one, approval of trips and district travel. Two point two, approval of the National District Attorneys Association Consent Form. Two point three, approval of the twenty-two, twenty-three HIB grades, school self-assessment. Two point four, approval of the following curriculum noted on our agenda. Two point five, approval authorizing the board secretary to enter into a dual-credit, customized program articulation agreement with Rome College of South Jersey. Two point six, approval authorizing the board secretary to enter into an articulation agreement with Rutgers School of Environmental and Biological Sciences. Two point seven, approval authorizing the board secretary to enter into a dual-credit high school partnership program with Stockton University.
Questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Ms. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Fioki?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes to all. I abstain from two point five.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Potty?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Requesting discussion and approval regarding procedure and operation items two point eight to two point fourteen. Two point eight, approval of the submission of the Vineland Public School Nursing Plan. Two point nine, approval to authorize the board secretary to enter into a partnership with Complete Care Memorandum Agreement for Student Health Solutions. Two point ten, approval of an agreement to participate in the Colgate-sponsored Bright Smiles Bright Futures Program. Two point eleven, approval of the agreement between the Vineland Board of Education and the Vineland Police Department for access to the VPS video system to assist the board in resolving emergencies. Two point twelve, approval of the following abolished policies as noted. Two point thirteen, approval of the first reading of the following policies as noted on our agenda. Two point fourteen, approval of the fall bus evacuation drills completed in September and October.
Any questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Roll call.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Ms. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Fioki?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Potty?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Requesting discussion regarding finance items four point one through four point ten. Four point one, approval of budgetary transfers for general school base and grants for September twenty-three. Four point two is acceptance of the board secretary's report. Four point three, approval of a grant application submission to the Cumberland County Alcoholism and Drug Abuse Service Grant. Four point four, approval of the submission of the following grant application, New Jersey Innovation Dual Enrollment Pilot Grant for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Four point five, approval of acceptance of the following grant which is on file with the board secretary, New Jersey School Insurance Group Safety Grant. Four point six, approval of submission and acceptance of the following grant which is on file with the board secretary, Center for Supportive Schools. Four point seven, approval of a resolution supporting the city of Vineland submission of a grant application to the New Jersey Department of Transportation for Veterans Memorial School ADA Walkway Improvements with estimated project cost of four hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. Four point eight, approval of a resolution appointing the following changes to the Truist Bank Depositors for Student Activity Accounts as noted on our agenda. Four point nine, approval of professional development in the amount of one thousand five hundred twenty-two provided by SRI and E T T C for Winslow School. Four point ten, approval of professional development at the November seventh, twenty twenty-three staff workshop, district-funded events, as noted on our agenda.
Any questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Roll call.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Ms. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Fioki?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes to all and I abstain on four point five.
Ms. Cottis Potty?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Requesting discussion and approval regarding finance items four point one through four point twenty-two. Four point eleven, excuse me, four point eleven, excuse me. Four point eleven, approval of professional development in the amount of nine thousand dollars provided by NJPSA FEA for Thomas Wallace Middle School. Four point twelve, approval of the pollution liability policy through Hardinburg Insurance. Four point thirteen, approval of a personal one-to-one aid tuition contract between Vineland Board of Education and Cumberland County Technical Ed Center. Four point fourteen, approval of tuition contracts for the Vineland Board of Education. Four point fifteen, approval of the tuition contract between the Vineland Board of Education and Atlantic County Vocational School Board of Education as the receiving district. Four point sixteen, approval of another tuition contract, of a tuition contract between Vineland Board of Education and Gloucester County Vocational School Board of Education, where they are the receiving district. Four point seventeen, approval of the Cumberland County Homeless Agreement for twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Four point eighteen, approval of the list of agencies and consultants for use by the child study team as part of the evaluation process when specialized testing is required. Four point nineteen, approval of a technology agreement between the city of Vineland and Vineland Board of Education for access to district intranet services at no cost to the district. Four point, in a form acceptable to the superintendent and board solicitor. Four point twenty, approval awarding the following contract for lease purchase financing, contractor KS State Bank. Four point twenty-one, approval of a resolution awarding Willens Goldman and Spitzer of Woodbridge, New Jersey for bond council services at the rate of three thousand five hundred to prepare the district legal and financial information for the lease purchase financing and for the acquisition of equipment. Four point twenty-two, approval of the final settlement agreement and release in a matter of MM and HM.
Questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
So moved. Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Ms. Douglas?
Yes, except for I abstain from four point eighteen.
Mr. Fioki?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Potty?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Regular agenda items, none. Proposed items for review or discussion or adoption by the board members, none. Approval of itemized bill pay list. Questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Ms. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Fioki?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Potty?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Old business? None. New business? Board member comments? Limited to five minutes, guys. Mr. Fioki?
Nothing at this time.
Yes, just want to congratulate Mr. Hall on his promotion and also congratulate Mr. Pierce on being transferred to VHS. It's a lateral move, but uh to be considered for the high school, I believe, is a greater responsibility and you should be commended, having been asked to move to the high school after your short time in the district. Obviously, you've been doing great work and have been an asset to VHS so far. So I'm wishing both of you gentlemen all the best as you connect with our high school students. Lastly, just briefly, uh, election day is November seventh, hoping everyone gets out and votes. Good luck to all the candidates and good luck to our incumbents that are here uh on the board, Mr. Rivera and Ms. Douglas. Have a great night.
Ms. Acosta?
I'd like to just take a moment and thank our VHS junior ROTC. They did a great job tonight, as well as the uh Pella Middle School Safety Patrol and the Veterans Memorial Safety Patrol. Um, I'd also just like to take a few minutes to uh congratulate um the school, VHS senior class officers that came out tonight. I really appreciate the comments that you made. I'm excited to see what you all do and um just know that we, the board, have your back. So um I'm really excited to hear about some of the ideas that you have and hopefully see them come to fruition. And uh just once again, congratulations to Mr. Hall. It sounds like he's going to do a wonderful job. Thank you. Oh, happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Ms. Douglas?
Good evening. Um, I would like to say thank you to all of those that participated in the flag salute. Um, I really want to commend the young students for taking authority and ownership of your education and standing up to speak out about it, because your involvement is, is why we do all that we do. So I really want to commend you because it takes a lot of courage. I'm in conviction to do that. Um, I would like to say congratulations to Mr. Hall and um everyone have a very good night. And as Mr. Holmes has already said, I hope everyone gets out and votes on the seventh if you haven't done so already. Have a good night.
Mr. Rivera?
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to echo and thanking the um JR ROTC and the students from Memorial and Pella for leading us in the flag salute. I would also like to thank all the speakers. They came and spoke tonight, um making us aware of issues that are concerning to them. I appreciate specifically our students. They're the ones who are affected by the policies and decisions we make up here. And I congratulate you, like our fellow board members said, and um keep doing it, because we need to hear from you. Um, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Hall on becoming the vice principal at Vineland High School. Looking forward to what you can bring to the table. I know it's going to be great. And I, and I appreciate for you putting in your name for consideration. And thank you for all the candidates that applied. Um, I'd like to uh wish the best to all of our veterans, that we're going to be thinking of you on Veterans Day. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your sacrifice. Um, it is why we enjoy the freedoms we have today, because of you. Um, I was able to attend three events last during Hispanic Heritage Month that I really enjoyed. Um, the reading at the Polito, the celebration Hispanic Heritage Celebration of Sabatére, and the Hispanic Celebration at Memorial School. Excellent events, all three of them. I know each school had their own event. I wasn't able to get to all of them. Um, but the events that I did attend, kudos to our district for allowing these events to occur. As a Latino and Hispanic, I am proud to, to be part of this school district. Um, and I see that the, the, the joy that our Hispanic students bring forth, showing their culture and allowing us to see their different cultures, was brought joy to my heart. And as like I said, as a Latino, I could not be prouder of this school district for allowing that to happen. Um, am I almost at my five minutes? I never keep track. Um, but happy Thanksgiving, believe it or not. But the next time we see each other will be after Thanksgiving. Happy Thanksgiving to all in Vineland, the school district, everyone. Enjoy your families. Enjoy your families. Enjoy your families. Um, election day, voting has started already. The polls are open right now. You can vote tonight until eight PM. The rest of the week until eight PM, Sunday until six PM. And of course, you can vote on election day on the seventh. And as always, um, I encourage parents to get involved in your children's education, ask lots of questions. Les, les animo a nuestras, nuestros padres que se vuelvan en la educación de sus hijos y hagan muchas preguntas. Thank you. Have a good night.
Mr. Sabrana?
Uh, thank you to our flag saluters and the JR ROTC for the um presenting of the colors. That's always, you know, stirs the feelings of, you know, our support for our country. Um, some interesting presentations tonight, um especially uh the um, sorry, I lost my train of thought. I'm trying to say two things at the same time. But anyway, thank you for our, to our presenters. And when Mr. Rivera was talking about the election next week, someone whose opinion I value a great deal said, people get the government that they deserve. So, and the people who make the decisions are the ones that show up. So, and there's no excuse to not go. You can, there's many ways you can cast your vote. Do that on November seventh. And also, yes, we are having a, a holiday in a couple of weeks and as usual, it's hard to believe that we're at the end of November already and the school year is going forward. So I hope it's a safe and pleasant time for our students, their families, the staff, and everyone here tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Salt?
Yes, um, I'd like to congratulate or thank our flag saluters from the VHS ROTC, Sergeant Dominic Pilla, Veterans Memorial. Um, also like to congratulate and honor all of our veterans that work in our school district and those that are not in our school district. Um, thank you for all the presenters, um, our class officers. Thank you for coming to the podium and sharing your thoughts and your ideas and taking control of your education. Um, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Hall um on your appointment as assistant principal at VHS. Very well deserved. I think you're going to bring a lot of perspective, especially with your
I think you're going to bring a lot of perspective, especially with your social service background and your willingness to have the kids, you know, do good. So I thank you for putting your name in the ring for that. And like to echo my fellow board members to go out to vote November 7. And lastly, congratulations to Coach Luciano, the VHS girls tennis team, finishing the season at 20-3, best record since 2005. They are also repeated county champions and also won the Cape Atlantic. Everyone have a good night and happy Thanksgiving.
Superintendent?
Thank you. Just a few highlights. I want to thank all of our student presenters who were here this evening, and also a special shout-out to Dina Bedoffel for her presentation on our student achievement. We're going to be diving deeper into those results. Seems like there's quite a bit of a positive momentum in the district. We went all out for Hispanic Heritage Month. All of our schools do a great job honoring the richness and diversity of our community. We were able to attend our team cabinet, and many board members had visited a lot of our school events, which were exceptional. Our teachers did a wonderful job presenting and supporting our community. On October 11, we had a wonderful day. We're, Plum Street, a section of Plum Street was renamed Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Way. It was a great celebration for our community. It brought together many of our community members, our board of education, city government, and community advocates. It was an excellent day. So we also want to thank the VHS African-American Experience Class for spearheading this cause. Congratulations to Kylie Gonzalez for being named Miss Monogram on October 14. Awesome game, great festivities. The weather was tough, but we still had a good day. On October 18, we officially welcomed a new chapter of the Future Farmers of America at Violin High School, the first since 1963. A wonderful ceremony was held at VHS and concluded with a tour of the beautiful new greenhouse. Thank you to our board members who were able to visit that day, Mr. Rivera and Mrs. Sabrana. Congratulations to the 90 middle school students who were recently inducted into the National Junior Honor Society on October 23. We are so proud of our commitment, of your commitment to the ideals of the New Jersey Honor Society, National Junior Honor Society, excuse me. We're also, we have some breaking news, which is really exciting. Today, we received a notice from the Department of Education that our application to the High Impact Tutoring Grant was awarded for over $600,000 of funds to support students in grades three and four. This would be High Impact Tutoring provided by our teachers for our students in grades three and four. We're going to be partnering with our school leaders and our teachers to get this launched. We're one of the first districts to receive this award, and we're very excited to have it. Thank you to Gia, thank you to Suzette and the team, our principals and Mr. Frye for the work that they all did to put this together. And again, November, can you believe it's November? My goodness. November's schedule is so interesting, lots of days, lots of legal attendance days, days off, turkey days, lots of football, there's a lot going on. Please be sure to watch your website, the app, our announcements, our phone calls, so everyone knows what the schedule looks like. And happy Thanksgiving.
I'd just like to thank our safety patrols from Sergeant Dominic Pillar Middle School and our Veterans Memorial, to our Violin High School Junior ROTC. Thank you for coming out, and good luck on your inspection on Friday. I know this is a very, very big event for you guys. It's the first time, I think, that they've been doing it since before COVID, so I wish them well. To our seniors coming out to speak, thank you, and thank you for bringing up so many things, and we look forward to having you here at each board meeting. Mr. Adams and Ms. Fiori, congratulations on that award. Ms. Ronaldo, thank you. Mr. Hall, congratulations. I know that you're going to do a fantastic job. You're involved in the community, you're involved with the students, so I wish you well. Everybody who came out to speak, thank you. We always like to hear what you're thinking. If you don't come to speak, we don't know. And to our veterans, thank you for your service and your sacrifice. If it wasn't for you and your family, we wouldn't be sitting up here doing what we're doing. We're going to be retiring into executive session after this meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.